I hereby call the City of Buellton City Council Meeting for January 9th to order, if I could get Councilmember King to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Can you hand over your heart and repeat after me? Pledge allegiance.
(Inaudible) United States of America. (Inaudible) one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You okay?
Yeah, I'm fine.
Thank you, Dave. Roll call, Linda?
Hey, Councilmember Andrusik.
Here.
Councilmember King.
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mercado.
Here.
And Mayor Sierra.
Here. Thank you. We have no reordering of the agenda tonight? Okay. We move on to public comments. This is when our audience has an opportunity to get up and speak about anything that they care to. They've got three minutes to complain, to compliment, to talk about agenda items or anything that they wish. I have two speaker slips so far. Our first speaker is Mr. David Desmond. Please step up, sir. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Sierra, councilmembers, important staff. My name is David Desmond. I live at 1005 Edwards Place in Lompoc. Don't let that scare you. I am here as a representative of the U.S. Census. I'm a newly assigned recruiting assistant for the Lompoc and San Yenés Valleys. First off, I want to pass on some thanks. We've been to your city offices and Buellton Rec and discovered Buellton and had an amazing amount of cooperation and help from those folks. Thank you very much. I know you folks have been probably pushed a little from the county, who's pushed by the state, who's pushed by the feds, to get the word out, to get people to respond to the census. My function is to hire people to do the enumeration, if it gets to that, if people don't respond online, by phone, or letter, mail-in. Our ultimate goals dovetail. The more people we can get from the community to be available as census takers, enumerators, the more likely it is we're going to count everybody. The only thing I want to add, anything that you think you can do to help with the recruiting end, mention it when you do your other outreach. It'd be greatly appreciated. And I came up with a pretty good comeback for people who are not comfortable, who say, "Well, I don't know, apathy." They're going to use the information we generate, no matter what. To be fair, it has to be accurate, so we need to count everybody. Thank you very much.
Truly appreciate it. Thank you. Have you gotten much of a response from any residents in Buellton that are interested yet?
You know what? I'm going to be at Albertson's in the cold tomorrow morning, so I'll get you a plastic table. So I'll let you know then. The valley, we're behind, but we're gaining it. There's going to be five or six of us in the valley tomorrow between Solvang and here and San Yenés.
Terrific. Well, anything we can do to help.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Question, is that a full-time job, or is that something you could hire, somebody part-time?
It's temporary, full-time or part-time. Daytime, evenings, some weekends. We want to catch people when they're home, obviously. Twenty-one bucks an hour. Time starts when you leave your house in the morning, you get paid for your mileage. I mean, it's a good gig for temporary. For those of you that might know eighteen-year-old students and like that, it's a great resume enhancement. What was your summer job? I worked for the federal government as a census taker. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Carolina Peet. Welcome back.
Thank you. Happy New Year. Thank you for allowing me to speak about the damage being done to our country by the nonstop attempts to impeach President Trump. Impeachment of a rightly elected president is reserved only to use in obvious violations of loyalty to the Constitution or criminal acts based on clear evidence on which both political parties agree. But that is not what is happening now. The vote on resolution for articles of impeachment passed with 231 Democrats in support and zero Republican votes. This is a strictly partisan impeachment attempt to overturn the results of President Trump's election. These actions on the part of congressional Democrats violate our democratic process, which was set into motion at the founding of our country, been in continuous operation for well over 200 years, and serves as the foundation for our peaceful transitions of power. Just like after two and a half years of investigation and $40 million, there was no collusion with Russia. After the release of the phone call transcript, there was no collusion with Ukraine. Representative Adam Schiff held closed-door meetings in a top security room in the basement of the Capitol. There was no need for such extreme security when the transcript of the phone call, which was supposed to be the reason for the investigation, was promptly released to the public. Even now, congressional Democrats continue to disrespect the intentions of our founding fathers. While weeks ago claiming the impeachment is urgent for national security, they continue their stall tactics, delaying transfer of the articles of impeachment to the Senate. Our democracy is not a political football to be kicked around and abused by politicians scheming about how they can manipulate the system in order to gain power. While congressional Democrats continue to play their impeachment games with our democracy, our country pays the price, creating division among citizens in what is supposed to be one nation, under God, indivisible. Our democracy doesn't belong to a political party. It belongs to the American people, people of good conscience, goodwill, and common sense. Thank you for being willing to listen and consider these ideas.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have any other speaker slips, so if nobody's jumping for the table to fill out their form, I am closing down public comment. Moving on to our consent calendar, we have four items tonight. We have the minutes of December 12th, 2019, special city council meeting, minutes of December 12th, 2019, regular city council meeting, list of claims to be approved and ratified for payment to date for fiscal year 2019-20, and the monthly treasures report for November 30th, 2019.
Move for approval.
All righty, Linda?
Hey, Councilmember King.
Aye.
Councilmember Andrusik.
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Mercado.
Aye.
And Mayor Sierra.
Aye, thank you. No presentations tonight, no public hearings tonight. City council comments/items. Councilmember King, any comments/items from you?
No, ma'am.
Councilmember Andrusik?
Not at this time.
Councilmember Sanchez, any comments or items?
No, I just wanted to let anybody know who wants to see the... I installed a solar light on Industrial Way between the Endolos Energy. Actually gave the light to A&amp;A Pump, just for public viewing, kind of like an example. If anybody wants to go see what it looks like, it's out there to take a look at, for example.
Will it be up for a while?
Yeah.
A couple of weeks?
It'll be a while.
Thank you.
Throws out a lot of light. Looks good.
Yeah. It was just, we had to figure out heights and distances, but that's just...
What height does that one add? The one you did?
It's 18 feet because...
Nineteen?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
And I had between 16 and 20 kind of for an option, and I wanted to keep it a little low because I didn't want to offend anybody on the other side, which doesn't go across to anybody. I was concerned with the people behind if they cared about the light. There's only a couple of people that would...
They wouldn't be used to it.
Yeah.
Never had one there before.
We'll see what happens. If anybody, I don't think anybody has anything to blame.
I was going to ask Scott about a future agenda item for the flag issue. Could we bring that to a future agenda?
The issue running the state flag.
Yes.
Yes, I'd be happy to... If the council would like to see that, we'd be happy to bring an item forward regarding that.
Contacted our negligence.
Ah, okay. Vice Mayor Mercado, any comments?
I just have one comment. I just wanted to thank staff and the council for sending a wonderful bouquet to my wife and family for the passing of her father at Christmas time, and it was greatly appreciated.
Former councilmember Jales Mowles. Yeah. Good guy. Loved his humor.
Thank you.
I had just two, real quick. First of all, I wanted to compliment Councilmember Sanchez. I did see the solar light, and it does, it's nice and bright. I'd be curious to see what kind of measurements we need to take in, to see if the lumens are correct, the right hours and everything else, because it certainly is a wonderful alternative to some of the options that, you know, we are considering. So I appreciate you putting it up there. I thought it looked terrific, so...
And staff will be looking into that and bringing it back. I believe we're set for the second meeting in February to bring that item back for discussion.
Terrific, terrific. And I...
Would Randy come and do it, or answer questions?
The selection of a vendor for such lights would necessarily need to go out for bid.
Okay.
And so we will come back to the second meeting in February with a recommendation as to whether or not the lights are a viable option, and there's a number of different aspects we have to, we need to take a look at from an engineering and liability standpoint. Once that's done, then the city council can decide whether they want to move forward with the solar lights or with the more traditional PG&E lighting. And then if the solar lights are the choice, then we'll need to go through whatever process is necessary to bid that job.
Thank you.
And I also wanted to compliment city staff. I've been able to participate in the City in Schools program that our new city manager initiated. Andre has been there to help the fifth-grade students plan their own city, and Rose has been there to, working with Safe Routes to School and showing them exactly what Public Works is in a city such as Buellton. And our city manager's been wonderful. We are meeting on the 27th Monday of this month to find out their assignment over the holiday was to list their likes and dislikes in Buellton, to think about electing their own council, and what their, pick a project of what they would like to see happen in Buellton to do themselves. So, anyway, my compliments. I've just been really excited, and it's been a really neat experience. Thank you. Okay, so we go on to written communications?
No, I'm missing it.
Committee reports. Any committee reports?
We had an Arts and Culture Committee meeting, and it was pretty interesting. And we're getting, we're still working on the bylaws and the press releases and stuff, and it's still pretty much in its infancy, but we were missing Art Parks Rec guy.
Kyle?
Kyle wasn't there, but everyone's...
You held it together pretty well.
Yeah, I didn't, but they did. But yeah, and everybody's just kind of working on ideas, and it's coming along, so...
Nope? Okay. I just had a couple. I had LAPCO today, and basically our director gave us the year in review. I was there for part of it. I got appointed as an alternate in March, so I was there for part of the year. And we had a Green Team meeting this afternoon. Dave Cross came to discuss loans for recycling market development zones, and we discussed how we're going to recycle some of our styrofoam and other products that should, could be recycled, beautiful Buellton. We're looking at changing, right now we're offering up to 750 to redesign a front yard landscaping as long as it's been approved ahead of time, and that there's grass on the lawn, something, and we're looking at changing that so that it includes some of the labor, and that it doesn't have to be living grass. It kind of ruins the purpose to take dead grass, dump a bunch of water on it to get it green so you can rip it up. It just, anyway, so that's the Green Team. All righty, moving on to business items. Agenda item number five, ordinance number 20-01, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Buellton, California, readopting Chapter 8.12 of the Buellton Municipal Code pertaining to the 2019 California Fire Code as adopted and amended by the County of Santa Barbara. This is an introduction and first reading. Mr. Wolf?
Thanks to you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. As the mayor noted, this is the introduction and first reading of an ordinance to adopt the California Fire Code as it has been adopted by the County of Santa Barbara. Periodically, the California Fire Code goes through an update process, and during that update process, lessons that have been learned over the past five years and new technologies and new findings are integrated into the new code. Once that code is agreed upon and adopted at the state level, it then goes to the counties for their adoption. The counties adopt it, making changes that are appropriate, as deemed by the fire officials and the board of supervisors for each individual county, at which point then it needs to be adopted by the cities. So at this time, it is time for the City of Buellton to readopt the Fire Code. In this case, it would be the 2019 version of the California Fire Code. This is the first reading. This is kind of a, because this adoption or readoption of the Fire Code is an adoption of an ordinance by reference, the notice and hearing procedures are a little bit different from what you're typically used to seeing. Typically, we send out notice in advance. We hold a first reading at a public hearing, and then the second reading is more of a perfunctory issue that the council just addresses, frequently on almost a consent-type basis. In this instance, the first reading is done this evening without public notice. Public notice will take place over the next several weeks, at least being published to the newspaper at least twice in successive weeks, and we'll hold an actual public meeting at a date to be determined by the city council this evening. Staff is recommending that that date be February 13th, 2020. At that time, anyone from the public is more than welcome to come and comment on this. We will have a representative of the Santa Barbara County Fire Department to answer any questions that the council may have, and at that time, should the council deem it appropriate, the new Fire Code would be adopted. So with that, I'll conclude my report. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Before I open it to the public, do we have any questions? No questions? Okay, I open it up to the public. I haven't received any slips on this one, so I'm closing it to the public, bringing it back to council for conversation and direction.
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 20-1 as written.
I'll second it.
Yeah, and to set the hearing date for February 15th and to direct...
Your staff to publish a notice.
Yes.
Staff to, is it 13th?
Yes, 13th.
13th, and to direct staff to publish notice. Thank you, sir.
That's it.
Great motion.
Second.
Okay. Can we just do one on this one, or do we need an individual?
Please vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All righty. Thank you. Agenda item number six, a review of comprehensive annual financial report, the CAFER, for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019. Ms. Zamora?
Madam Mayor and city council, tonight I present to you the comprehensive annual financial report, also known as the CAFER, for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019. Each year, financial statements are prepared and submitted to city council for acceptance. While only basic financial statements are required by law, the city prepares the CAFERs to ensure more, a more comprehensive financial presentation of the city's financial position. This provides a broader scope than the financial statements and allows the community and other interest parties to gain a better understanding of the city's finances and operations. The CAFER is prepared following guidelines provided by the Government Finance Officers' Association, GFOA, and following these guidelines allow the city to apply for the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. The city has received this award six consecutive times, and we anticipate receiving the award again this fiscal year. The CAFER is organized into three sections, the introductory, financial, and statistical. The introductory section is intended to familiarize the reader with the general structure of the city, the nature and scope of city services, and it includes the transmit letter that provides background information and acknowledges the efforts of staffs. The main bulk of the CAFER is the financial section. This includes the independent auditor's report, the management discussion and analysis, and the financial statements, including the notes. And then the last section, the statistical section, includes financial trends and the demographic information about the city. Also included in the staff report is the result of the internal control audit. In addition to auditing the financial statements, the auditors also audit the internal controls. This year, they only had two findings, which you see in your packet, have been addressed by staff. The CAFER was audited by Moss Levy and Hartzime LLP. The auditors expressed an opinion that the city's financial statements for the fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019 are fairly stated in conformity with the accounting principles generally accepted in the United States. This is the most favorable opinion, commonly known as the unmodified or clean opinion. Travis Hall from Moss Levy and Hartzime is in attendance to answer any questions you may have. There's no fiscal impact to the city as a result of the CAFER. Staff recommends that the city receive and file the CAFER for fiscal year ended June 30th, 2019. If staff has any questions for Mayor Travis, we will answer it at this time.
Okay. Any questions, first of all, before we open it? I had, I had two of them, and I don't know if you're the, you're the good... I just, on page 44 of the hard copy, it says cash and investments, total cash and investments, $16 million, $15,000, $20. That's, I'm just, cash and investments, that's money that the city could put their hands on if they needed to in an emergency.
That would be only cash, and whatever amount is in life is what the city can actually put their hands in. With the CDs, they have different maturities. We can, we can take them out, but we may lose on the discount.
Right. I'm looking on the next page at the authorized investment type and the maturity dates on them.
Yeah, we're pretty much locked in, so we can only get our hands on those when they mature.
Okay. The other question was on page 59 of the hard copy. I had seen that Buellton, as always, which I'm very proud of, has no long-term debt, but it says here under the joint operating agreements, or excuse me, deficit fund balance, that we have a deficit transportation planning special revenue fund of $103,453.
So that is a note too, so we're supposed to disclose any funds with a deficit? That transportation planning has had a deficit as far back as in the last 10 years. It looks like at some point the city did something, and so now that is funded by the general fund. So the general fund lets that fund borrow money, and it's still, whenever that fund has revenue, it has to pay back the general fund. So this deficit was bigger a couple of years ago.
Interesting. Okay. Okay, so eventually it will be paid down?
If it makes money, yes, and if we get more funding.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any, any other questions? No? Okay.
Are we projected to be in the black on all of our water and wastewater funds this year?
Very little. We barely, if you look at the CAFER, let me look at the page number.
I saw the chart. It looks like it's trending in the right direction, but do you project that we're going to be at least in plus?
For this current fiscal year 1920, because of the repairs that are happening, we might not. We are going to pull from the reserve. We have a lot of repairs at the water treatment plant and the wastewater, so we may be in the red this year.
At least we'll go in the right direction.
Water is doing well. Wastewater, it just isn't...
Yes, this sort...
A lot of infrastructure.
Yeah.
It's a chart.
Okay.
What page is that on? The funds?
For the enterprise funds, let me give you a page number.
What are you talking about? This page here? Do you have it?
I don't have that one marked.
It's okay.
It starts on page 29 of the hard copy and page 84 of the council packet. You're welcome.
Do you have questions on it?
No.
Okay. All righty. If there are no questions, I open it to the public. Questions, comments? Don't see anybody in the public with questions or comments? Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you for having me.
I just had a couple of comments before it's filed and received. On page 10, it shows that our biggest expenditure is still public safety, which is prime interest to our community. We spend almost $2 million a year on fire and police, which is taking our constituents' concerns to heart. I also, where was it? Excuse me, I'm sorry. I had, there was our crime rate, the number of arrests that you have in the back of the book, have gone down considerably, which must be a good thing, right?
Okay, Eddie.
Right? From 429 arrests in 2010 to 186 in 2019, from 644 noncriminal citations in 2010 to 318 in 2019. Our fire calls have gone up considerably, but I just wanted to compliment our sheriff's department, our contract service, because they do a wonderful job in our community, especially after yesterday's ordeal.
I'll second that.
Just two more comments, and then I, then I, streetlights. I noticed streetlights, everything, our police stations, we've remained the same at one since 2010, one fire station since 2010. Parks have doubled in size. Our streetlights have gone from 50 streetlights to 91 streetlights in nine years. So I thought that was, that was pretty cool. Yeah, and there was one other one, and I cannot see it, so I will stop talking. Gentlemen, any comments? Any?
Well, I know how we'd probably get our crime rate to go to zero, because if we took a picture of Eddie and put a big banner over the street and says, "You're going to have to deal with this guy," and there'd be zero crime rate.
Our police chief does a pretty darn good job. Anyway, I just, I was, I was very impressed with the details in this report, and I'm actually starting to understand it after almost 12 years. I really appreciate that. Yeah, sooner or later, I was going to have to...
Thank you.
Anyway, I truly, I truly appreciate all the work that went into it, all the way around. Truly, truly appreciate it.
Very comprehensive.
Thank you.
Thank you, Shu.
Thank you.
Okay. Good night, Caroline.
Good night.
Do we move then that the city council review and file?
Except for receive, right?
Yeah, we just receive and file. Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Done. This is a quick meeting. City manager's report.
This is such a quick meeting, I'm going to spend about an hour and a half.
There you go. We're good.
No, just a few quick items this evening.
Couple of home movies.
Sure, why not? First item up is this Saturday, January 11th, the city will be holding its Christmas tree disposal activity, which, rather than burning our trees, we're going to mulch them. So this mulching operation will take place at the east end of River View Park, and trees can be dropped off beginning now?
Christmas, last Christmas.
Oh, last Christmas, okay. At the east end of the park, is it, is it a staffed operation there, or they just put it in a pile?
They can just put it in a pile.
Okay, so there's a pile of trees down there, add your tree to the pile on Saturday, between 9:00 and 12:00. Those trees will be mulched, and anyone wishing to come and pick up some of that mulch can do so on Saturday morning. Okay. As the mayor mentioned earlier, we have had our City in the School program, and it's going very well, and the students seem to enjoy it every month. As part of the City in the School program, one of the, one of the things we wanted to have the students do was to learn about the city and some of the activities that go on in municipal government, and some of the areas around town, or the locations around town, where they might experience that type of governance firsthand. To that end, we created a passport, which was distributed to all the students, and within the passport booklet are 10 locations for them to go visit and receive a stamp from each one. They include, obviously, City Hall, the library, the police station, the fire station, their elementary school, the Visitors Bureau, the post office, the Historical Society, and the school district offices, and there's a couple more in here as well. We distributed this at our first meeting with them back in October, and as of our December meeting with the students, we have had one student who has successfully visited all of these locations and returned her passport, and that would be our fifth grader from Oak Valley, Isabella Garcia. Valley, Isabella Garcia, and so we'd like to congratulate her on that.
Yep.
And we'll have a special treat for her coming up here in the near future, but I did want to announce that publicly, that she was the first one to have, and so far the only one that we're aware of, to have completed that, that passport. Lastly, just a little update, I have been requested to attend a grand jury meeting coming up here toward the end of the month, on the 23rd. I'm assured this is a routine meeting, that, I just want me to come and tooth the city's horn a little bit, and that I'm not going to be led away in handcuffs afterwards, but I'll be doing that, if any of you would like to join me, or maybe our attorney, I'd be really greatly appreciative of that, so.
Summons, or?
No.
Wonderful, thank you very much. Mr. Murphy?
We will now adjourn into closed session for three items, two items conferencing with the real property negotiator, the details are in the agenda, and the third item is the potential initiation of litigation. Thank you very much.
Certainly, Councilmember Andresek.
Madam Mayor, I forgot to commend staff for the transition to our public assembly area for Christmas events, the gazebo and the events that were held there, I think it was a resounding success, there were a couple of hundred people attended, and it was very well done, and I think staff made it very professional.
Thank you very much, and staff and the chamber have begun work already on next year's event, and I think the plan is to keep the event at that location, just like to rearrange it a little bit, and maybe accommodate a few more people, and hopefully a little better weather. So, it was perfect.
It's really nice. Okay, we're going to take a five-minute break?